I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we all stand forward to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is founded on a mission under God, and which is just as fair and just as equal.
Very hopeful we can get back to the next debate. Thank you. Okay, let me get a motion to accept the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Understood.
Moved from Mike's side.
Do we need to amend the agenda?
No, we'll still discuss that topic. We just won't have a presentation from Mike. If that's okay with y'all.
Yeah, I think then move.
Oh, did you move and he say?
It doesn't, just put it down.
One of us did. We did it some.
All right, any further discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, I'm gonna try to look if there's any announcements other than what we've already talked about. I will just say I thought the parade was a success. I appreciate all the hard work, all the volunteers and the staff. Thank you so much for that, especially the juice guys who have spent the weekend here and then worked on the fourth. So thank you, but also our admin staff and admin staff. So thank y'all for all the hard work. I did notice as a participant in the parade that our viewership was not what it has been in the past, I think. So we can take that as something to, you know, try to draw on more just awareness that we're having it. I think more people will be back next year. This year, the weather may have kept some people the fear of the weather. But no, all in all, I thought it was really good. Certainly a good experience from back in the rearview truck.
Probably all the sweet jobs, why they come up?
Oh my goodness. I thought they were gonna never end.
There was, yeah, a couple of really big groups.
Is that plum or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if clubs didn't register, right?
Did you?
I can't wait to get out by twenty, thirty years young, I gotta go get you one.
Definitely encourage that type of thing.
You're a doctor, doctor. Just go get it.
Just go get you one.
I don't know how twenty three years.
You're not looking like a lab, anyway. You should go ahead and enjoy it.
Enjoy it right there. Okay. Well, thank y'all. Are there any citizen concerns? No, sir. Yeah.
I'd like to remind you about Monday.
Yes, about Monday, about February, Monday?
No, we have public meetings at nine o'clock, six o'clock.
Oh, sorry, that's on the.
How about your tax?
On the military, ah, like, sorry. I'm telling you, my brain's like, what are you talking about, Mike? Remembering when the public meetings on the military are here and it's on the military. They are Monday at nine AM and six PM here. And then we'll have another one in August. We'll do that before our August voting meeting. So, yeah, sorry, thank you. I totally forgot about the military hearings. I had queue cards for two months. And you were, I was like, yeah, we have a meeting next Monday night as well. We do have a meeting next Monday night. We have a work session on the eighteenth at six thirty. So be here if you can, please, because I'm sure we'll have plenty to discuss today. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. So again, public hearings for discussing the military next Monday, nine AM and six PM here at C N O. If you have any interest, come here and share your concerns.
So we don't have to have a forum today?
Not only do you have to vote here.
We just have to have someone here to record their comments, yeah? So we'll, we'll definitely all be here for the evening one, or I'm gonna have to all be here, I guess, but six.
I'll be here for the morning one.
Okay.
For six o'clock, so we can tie for.
Yeah, so you can get here at six thirty, but okay. So if you can, come on thirty minutes early for the six o'clock. I don't anticipate anybody's gonna be here, but it's fine. This wish not. So, yeah, any other mayor's announcements that I haven't forgotten to do? Thanks, Mike. Citizen concerns. Do we have anyone with a citizen concern that wants to?
That's actually not concerned, by the way.
I think my hard drive is reaching capacity. I need to dump some, some stuff. All right, well, we'll move on. Next item, we were gonna have Mike Hopkins, the executive director of Newton County Water and Sewer Authority, come and request our approval on an amendment to the service delivery strategy, specifically the water and sewer service areas. And you all were sent the materials that we received from Newton County Water and Sewer Authority. Just for record, so everyone knows, if you didn't see your email, Mike Hopkins asked for, to remove it from the agenda, or at least asked if he could schedule another time to come back to us with that actual request, that he wanted to have a, to revisit this and have a discussion with us and others based on our concerns that were voiced. And by our concerns, I'm saying these concerns that were voiced when he came in May. We asked him about the two parcels, the northwest part of our service area, essentially starting from along the boundary of the city, along Creek there, at Airport Road and going north. It's, there are two parts.
The three ring, three ring image.
So they, yeah, they call that that hashed area, the three ring area, because it's.
Other than that, it's all.
Sorry. It's related to the three ring studios and the City of Covington providing water and sewer there. It's part of kind of industrial development along that Highway one forty-two corridor. And then, but then they came on around and encompassed the. Let's see, yeah. So they encompassed these parcels that are currently in our service area that are owned by the Phillips family. And what this map does not show is that we have a water line that runs along Richardson Street, East Richardson, until it comes to Airport Road, and then it goes on Airport Road up to service this first subdivision. So we, you know, we very much have that line serving that property running on Airport Road. And we also have a sewer that, the trunk line that ends right at Airport Road and Dry Danny Creek there, that can also serve that property with sewer. So the one comment that was made was that the county, or Newton County Water and Sewer Authority had run this main into the middle of that property, which is the blue line you see. I don't know why they would have, because this has been in our service area. And this map was further signed and approved on July twenty-first of two thousand and twenty. So anyway, we can talk about, anybody has any questions about that? But we understand that some of the, a couple of the cities had already approved this request. And so we asked if we could put the brakes on and revisit, discuss, because this was only the second time we had seen any of this. And so, you know, we felt like we needed to be part of this conversation when we're trying to take away a developable piece of property that we might get revenue out in the future.
Well, there's several things that really bug me about it. Nothing.
Can you use your microphone so I can hear you?
No, I got, I, I went out and called, here it is. So you don't know. Uh, is that better, Mike?
Yeah, yes, I think I can hear you now.
Okay, good. I would hate for you to miss any of this. Most of that plan is not about, so all the goodies to come. I have those two subdivisions that left us up there, at least one of them is on private port system. And the other one is partially on a private port system, if I understand correctly. And I am quite sure, as Bill and I talked a little bit earlier today, that pipes and those systems will not manage the pressure that the city's more system would put on it. And therefore, it's gonna be a lot of infrastructure there that we would end up having a, or, you know, benefit returning to us in any reasonable amount of time, because we've already looked at that one time. It was yours. And decided to, well, the people in the subsidy decided they could afford it.
Right, right, they could, yeah.
And the other thing that, that happened in the room to me, and I hate to, I hate to even bring it up, but we have a representative on that, the board, the board of Newton County Water System. And, but he's been ill for quite some time. And, and I know that from, not personally, but through mutual friends, that he's been more compliant to his home than, than the rest of us might be during the period of COVID, that's all. So I wondered if he was in on the conversation about this. And if he was, then, or if, when he was doing that. They say he left counsel about six or seven years ago, I'm not sure. So if we just ask him today, because he was so well versed in it at the time. But this, this concern that, in that regard, without any. I'm trying to be very political here, because he's a hell of a nice guy, and I don't want to kick him in the decent or anywhere else that, but I just want to express my concern about this whole setup here, just because three ring studios up there, up edge of, of all the rest of that property that belonged to the same people that toured the school and all of that is undeveloped. I'm sure it's being looked at with greedy lips, so to speak, because it's a place housing now and that sort of thing in the growth in the county. That's, this whole thing just bothers me a lot. I don't see why they should go to code. And I think we should, we did a much bigger slice of the pie. And this down here does not compensate for that in any way, shape, or fashion, because this is pretty well scrubbed out.
Anybody else?
What you say down here, you talking about the worst.
You're marked out.
Yeah, so I have to say, I agree with Jim. Those were concerns that I had as well. I cannot know that these subdivisions were unprovided, right? But, but I did have concerns about making adjustments, you know, so, and the cost of that.
Yeah, that's not the situation that's supposed to be, is it?
I believe those are in unincorporated areas of, you know, our county.
Sure they are.
I believe you're right.
Where's the more?
Well, the, the property that, you know, all this property is in the airport, it's a property, it's obviously Covington.
So it's up here, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, this is, the, there are properties owned by the Newton County Industrial Authority that are just less of a properties that we're talking about, as well as this big square where it says Two Covington from N C W A to say. Right underneath that, there's a square, because that's also owned by the same family that owns the two that they were talking about, pulling out the Phillips family. And then the county school ward owns right above that, I believe, right here, which is where the school is on that. But then down below it, these are run by the industrial. So they're not that far from industrial developed property, including the three ring studios property. And so it's possible, given the fact that City of Covington has settled all the property around and including the airport as heavy industrial, that they would want to extend heavy industrial in that section as well.
Absolutely. I don't have any issues with that so much as.
We would get revenue for what it serves.
Well, that's gonna be the big users, you know, or the, the higher map order there. Whereas with a, with a home, you're just gonna have what the other issues you have with residential.
So were you able to talk to Mike and make those concerns clear?
So we changed emails today and he said, you know, he appreciated our understanding. If we could just take a step back and revisit and talk about it with staff. And he apologized for any misinformation or miscommunication around it. And so, yeah, well, he basically asked to withdraw the request so that that can be further discussed. And then I did have a fun conversation with Mayor Horton, who also agreed that we should talk about it more and that he wasn't aware, really wasn't even, didn't really, wasn't really looking at it and thinking about it. And so definitely was game to talk about whether that made sense as well, so.
I was just gonna say, one thing that David and I kind of came across today, just so you might want to know, that for a change in the S D S to be made, the county has to approve. Covington has to approve because there are over nine thousand people on the county seat. But then the majority of other cities have to approve. So technically, see, Porter, I'm sorry, Mansfield and New Bern have already approved this. Now, why they didn't come and ask us or talk to us, we don't know. But they didn't, and they've approved it. So technically, if Mansfield approved it, it wouldn't matter what we felt about it.
You mean the, Porter?
I'm sorry, Porterville. And so now whether that would, you know, whether Covington would still move ahead with it, we don't know. It doesn't seem that way, or whether Mike would still move ahead with it, we don't know. But technically, they could take that path. And it's the thing that we would say of Porterville and Mansfield and New Bern is, if you don't watch our back, then we won't be watching your back. And, you know, like, it all makes sense for the smaller communities to hold together and think, but, you know. So just be aware of that strategy.
Yep. And it's definitely, I mean, I think to Councilman Wyden's point, communication with the Water and Sewer Authority at the board level and decisions they're making is, we haven't really had any communication coming our way. Mike's always been good at coming over and talking about what's going on every year. But, but this, this request to change has apparently been in the works, being discussed for the last couple of years, two or three years, and this, we heard about it for the first time in May. And, and when I said something about the map, he even seemed surprised that, and so he would go back and check. And then he did. He came back and showed us a better resolution map that showed that, in fact, they were trying to shift two of our larger parcels out of our service area. So just communication was not optimal. And so that, that was my point to Mayor, Mayor Horton, and to Mike was, you know, we had concerns. Let's talk about this before we move ahead. Thankfully, they said, agree.
The, the city limits of Covington are really rocky in that area.
They are.
The, the track right across from the school, I don't know where that is. Not, that's Newton County Industrial Authority, but the track where the church did not tend to city limits. The track is three ring circle, the studios is in the city. And the track across from that, over Water Forty-two is there. And then it just pretty much skips everything until it gets down to the airport. And the, the track where the church is by the airport, I don't remember the name of that church.
Sims Chapel?
Sims Chapel, you're right. Now, the rest of everything else is unincorporated. All that that they're talking about down there in the, in the hash lines, I believe, are stated pretty well unincorporated.
Yeah, I mean, I think the Covington and, and the county in the, in sort of Covington-related industrial development area is running out of large parcels that are served on water and sewer. And so, you know, this, this brings more of that property into the Covington water and sewer domain for that to incentivize them to supply water and sewer for future development.
So Mr. Mayor, so we don't have any leverage if the majority of the citizens in the county go with the plan. So they're gonna take something away from us that we already have.
That is what we understand the law as, oh, yeah, that basically they can, with that, with the majority, so three council cities, plus Covington, plus the county, they can act without our consent.
Because I totally agree with what Jim said, because the territory is very active. We pretty much stayed pretty much ahead of the game. And I kind of think that they thought we weren't watching this right here. We wouldn't know what to prove it off. Because I don't think we should give up a possible, anything that we already have to have any potential to prove it off.
Well, that, that big track up just to the north of Airport Road is in an unincorporated area, but it is, it is in our service area currently.
And one last thing is that in the past, I don't know how well it is now, we were dealing with the local option sales tax. We didn't have any problem getting, if it got us together, you know, because Steve Covington just carried over everything. So it was pretty much a, a kind of, pretty much a minority group thing. So I don't know how it is now, but I hope they're still consider working again.
I, I think it's possible that we just need to communicate. I suspect that the smaller municipalities have probably, they were presented with this and they went, well, okay, that looks fine to us, you know, but they didn't like really look at the details and think about it.
I think Steve Horton, as bad as a reasonable mayor, come across. He just has a kind of a steady, look at all sides kind of approach to things, in my experience. And maybe he just likes me, I don't know, but.
He went, he went out of his way to respond to me with a phone call, a text, and an email. So then I called him back, so I got off meetings and we talked. So he's definitely responsive and wants to talk it out, I understand.
He was like with the city manager, too. So I'm not concerned about that part. I just glad he called.
Me too, me too. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, let's real quick go to item eight, nomination for Mr. David Huber, served on the Oxford Plant Commission. Can you portion?
I'm interested.
Wait a second.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say aye. Okay, we have planned Dave Huber to the Oxford Plant Commission. Uh, next item is review of the sploß budget. This is, I think, we've tried to communicate, I don't know whether we've communicated this well, so I, that it's still in flux. And back to communication as a challenge. As you all have been on the council for a while, though, the previous sploß was talked about in months in advance. Lot of conversation, and the agreement was reached. There had been, we had gotten one outreach from the chairman of the Newton County Commission to have a conversation. At first, I thought it was all the mayors, but it turned out it was just with me. And, and he had that same individual conversation with other mayors. And he asked what, what Oxford was thinking about when it came to sploß. And, you know, I said, I think we're comfortable with staying with what we have in terms of percentages, in terms of the agreement, basically.
Which was what their former administrator offered us back in September.
Yeah, in September, so, yeah, this call was in like March or some, February, March. And previously, the, the no longer there county manager had shown Bill a piece of papers that here's the, you know, is basically the same percentages of sploß as was in twenty seventeen sploß. So we were going under, at least, you know, the assumption that that's, that the chairman did not have any issue with that. Then there was no communication whatsoever on it. The mayor has got together a few weeks ago and said, hey, you know, what have y'all heard? We shared notes, and some had been told percentages, some had not, or asked about percentages. And so the, we all reached out to the county, both on the staff side and on the chairman, the chairman. And he then had the attorney or the law firm that represents the county send us a certain letter to all the mayors saying, we'd like to have a, we'd like to initiate discussions on sploß. And we'd like to have a meeting with you on the next week, on Monday, the, I forget, the twenty-sixth of June or something like that. It was not that long ago. It was, when we went to that meeting, I shared with that, with y'all about the meeting, we went to that meeting. It was not a meeting with them, it was a meeting of them. And we were audience members, and we could come up to the podium and make our case. And they, they didn't really have any questions or comments about, in response to what we said. And, and so then I and Steve, Mayor Horton, both said, we need to get together on this, because they said they wanted, that we need, the attorney said that the intergovernmental agreement for sploß had to be approved by the nineteenth of July. And we said, okay, well, it is the twenty-sixth of June, and we have a voting meeting on the eleventh and could possibly have another meeting appointed, but the nineteenth. But very limited time, and I went up to the chairman afterwards and said, we need to just get in room and talk about this and get this resolved quickly. Haven't heard anything from the chairman or his office until, well, actually, still haven't heard anything on sploß at all since that meeting. Saw in the newspaper that they had a work session, and they, in response to us saying, we think the county should have seventy-six percent as opposed to the eighty-two percent they proposed, they said they would come back and counter offer eighty percent to the county and twenty percent to the cities. And that's the only communication that, well, that was a communication. That was just a story in the newspaper. No one said that to us. So, so then there was the local option sales tax piece, which is interrelated, because on the current I G A, intergovernmental agreement for the sploß, it says excess funds are dispersed by, in accordance with the loss numbers, which are different. So, that's sploß numbers. But there had been no communication whatsoever on loss. We were told that the chairman, without us, we were talking about loss, just wanted to talk about sploß. There was prodding from the cities on that point. And the way the law is, is by July first, the county had to notify the department, the Secretary of Revenue or the Chairman Department of Revenue for the state of Georgia of the intention to reauthorize loss by July first. And July fir, but if they fail to, then any of the cities in the county can notify the Department of Revenue and say that we're going to request to negotiate loss. No communication was received. July first came and went. City of Covington, on behalf of other cities, sent a letter saying, we want to initiate loss. And then two, I guess, two days later, three days later, in the mail, we got, certified mail, we got a letter dated July first that went supposedly to the Department of Revenue, saying they want to initiate discussion of loss. So communication has been, again, suboptimal with the county. And so we don't know what the number is gonna be. We know that they're projecting revenue over six years to be a hundred and eight million dollars. And they've used the six-year number to talk about how much revenue people get. I think, I, I don't want people to get a misunderstanding, it's, you know. So I think we were used, if you're used to five years, you want to compare what it would be. And I understand, well, for five years, it would be this versus what we got. But they've been talking about six-year sploß. I guess, you know, no one's really opposed to that. But we're supposed to meet again tomorrow, the mayors, from ten to eleven. So I want to get y'all's input on the discussions. I believe, I mean, the, the discussion before was seventy-eight percent would be what we would offer. And seventy-six percent would be the lowest that the cities would go with. And, or, I'm sorry, seventy-six percent would be what we would offer, seventy-eight percent would be the highest the cities would go with. So we'll see if that's what we come back with, just so you, seventy-eight percent seems unreasonable. But that's what it is now for twenty seventeen, seventy-eight percent. Loss is seventy-five percent for county. So I'll shut up and ask questions.
We actually have eighty-two percent.
This, this was based on, the, the only official communication we received was a letter from the county. Was it from the, I forget whether it was from the attorney or from the administrator. It was from, this was from the administrator, saying, here's our projected revenue, a hundred and eight million, six years. Here's the percentage that the county would get, here's the percentage that would go to municipalities, and then here is the portion based on that. So that's where, that's all coming from. The only official communication we received.
Sploß, what percentage did the county have?
County had seventy, seventy-eight percent on the current sploß. And then seventy-five percent was the loss number, so all the excess is going by, by that.
You want to say anything less than what we already have at the current sploß?
I mean, that was, again, what I said to the chairman at the time, was we, we want less than we were getting now. We're obviously less than a percentage of the total population that we were in twenty seventeen.
These aren't accurate census.
So these are accurate, yeah, this is based on the census numbers. This is a percentage based on census.
But that's the minimum by law they have to offer us, but that is the census number. The argument the cities were made, as you know, is because we're centers of activity, we should. The argument the cities were made, as you know, is because we're centers of activity, we should receive more of that.
But those, just understand, those percentages on one, two, three, four, and six, that's the percentage of the city portion, which is 17.27% of the total is what they were offering up. So if we went with a 80% to the county, then we would take 20% of the 108, 108 million. Um, and then that would be proportioned out according to these same percentages.
Those same cities pretty much in the country, right?
Yes. From, well, in the, in the way they represent the population, right? And, and none of the cities that said have contested that population numbers. Um, I don't know if y'all know why Porterville got a disproportionate amount of SPOSS. And I think it may have been to help them pay for their one, one and a half million dollar city building, the municipal building. Um, at least that's what was on, it was kind of a blip in their request. Maybe that was just rated design and sort of went along with that. But they got more than their share in the last SPOSS. Um, but this brings everything back into proportion.
Well, I think with SPOSS question came out, you have to identify the project that you wanted to use and request or something. I'm not, I'm not mistaken. Otherwise, it was kind of a big, you might not get any of the projects that you wanted. It looked like that before we decided what we wanted to do and how much it was going to cost, didn't we? That may be the reason they had a little more SPOSS than they needed.
Well, wait, I mean, the, the, the dollar amount that we got allocated, that we were allocated for the 2017 SPOSS was 1.5 million dollars, which was our proportion of the projected revenue for the 2017 SPOSS. So it was a, it was a fixed number. And so then we operated within that fixed number, how we wanted to allocate, we allocated some to public safety, some to transportation, some to infrastructure. So that was, that was a fixed number similar to what they're proposing here. Um, there is, you know, I think room to be, to, to discuss it. Like if there was a project in Oxford that had a, like a, you know, high level of importance to the county, that we could argue that we should get more.
Yeah, I think that's the way it kind of used to be, I thought.
And I think that's what happened in the quarter. They, they argued they needed more because it was an important project.
We're really, we're really pulling at 2% right now based on published numbers.
Yes, yes.
So.
We are 2.0519% of the county population. And just, just to give you the numbers, um, based on what they, uh, what the county initially proposed, on a five-year basis, we would, we would be getting, we would be projected to get 1.846 million dollars, which is, you know, 346,000 dollars more than we got this year. But on six-year, we can get 2.2 million dollars.
A question. Has Social Circle already been involved in this? I didn't think so.
They were not in the previous SPOSS and they, but they only had that five, but cause since the last census, they annexed in, uh, part of the county.
I thought, what, what, what do you mean county? I saw that, I was just checking.
They annexed since the last SPOSS.
Okay. So David, I, I was saying that our numbers, our, our census numbers are artificially low with the college population here 10 months of the year, essentially that are counted in their homes.
No, they are counted here. The way, the, the way the census is, is written is, are you a resident as of April 1st? And so the camp, the, the college gives us numbers and we use that population from the college to put it here. What it doesn't represent is our city population.
Home going, I'm head of a household that numbers this many kids.
But they, but the census says if, that you can't count someone who's in college and living somewhere else.
Okay.
That's actually, actually in the instructions now. Whether that happens and people double count, yeah.
See, it's hard to, it's hard to handle that the colleges actually be growing up in, in their residence at each year. And that, that 2020 to be a political success to the fact that we had COVID, it changed everything. And the city population can't change that from that.
Covid, they were, they would have been sent home already.
They were not on.
Well, I would not have counted. Cause I mean, we, the math doesn't really work. They've, they've increased since 2010. They've increased by probably 450 students and our population, I don't think went up that much.
Cause I, I remember a couple sometime back then, as a group, had a conversation about maybe they sure that they were here yet. When the census came out, you know, you needed, you needed that to count.
I don't know. I, I, it seems like though we used the, the college census, did, cause they were technically, they were still enrolled here.
So maybe that's a number.
They were just sort of sent home, but they weren't, I don't know.
I, I'll remember, I'm sorry, the numbers.
They don't, they don't, and we, yeah.
It'll be 10 years before it's changed.
Yeah. But I mean, the, so the, the positive side, uh, if, if the county would have accepted our proposal for them to get, the county gets 76% and then cities to allocate according to these percentages, the city of Oxford would have gotten 2.6 million dollars over five years. Um, if they had done so compared with the 1.5 we got this past year, so over a million dollars more. If they accept our, a 78% counter proposal, um, then we will get 2.4 million dollars. So we're standing to get a significant amount more in SPOSS revenue based on projections. Um, if that's, you know, sort of consolation, it's kind of like when you guys did your sustain, your financial sustainability analysis. You said the pie is going to get bigger even if the percentage gets smaller. And that's basically what's happening. Pie is getting bigger, even though the percentage got smaller. But we're, our, our absolute number is going to go up, or is projected.
Clear.
Yeah.
We're, on, uh, another page. Push you on Haygood Street, Water Main, 2 million, 800,000 dollars. This is another point of discussion. I don't want us to hide tonight, but, uh, in that point of discussion, does Haygood Street feed the college?
Yeah. Uh, and this is, we, we need to, sorry, I mean, I guess shift and, and because we want to talk about the allocation.
Well, what I was trying to shift to is that that's an unusual thing for a large portion of population. And could we do like Porterville did and request additional monies because we're having to redo that portion of our infrastructure to accommodate, to accommodate a college, if you would.
I don't know. Is it, you, it definitely, uh, is the water main that supports the college and the college?
It primarily supports the college, but other parts of the city too. Yeah. I mean, it definitely is a large line for the college's use.
It would seem to me that if, if the city hall at Porterville is, is an adequate reason to ask for more money, then something feeding that larger portion of the population, not only the city, but the county, would be a reasonable thing to ask for additional monies for option. Especially since we seem to have a short haul in that regard. I mean, it's just good to talk.
I mean, especially since you don't, you don't want to just give up in a heartbeat situation. You want to have more sort of.
Ask for it.
That's right. That's right.
That's what we're about. You sure we'll do it if you don't ask?
That's exactly right.
Yeah. No, I mean, we can, we can raise that. Definitely. Yeah. I mean, uh, we can ask that. The, the thinking that we present here is that, um, we've got the engineering estimates from Carter and Sloot for these different segments of, of water lines that need to be replaced even because of transite pipe or they're just really, really old.
I just brought it up in relation to what you, what the topic of discussion was.
Yep.
It's, it's a part of my, my concern is what you had said that you all are pushing for. I'd go with that. I, I rely on you to do that kind of thing. It's a good rely on here to do, I'm so. I'd say often won't look at Oxford and rest of them I got chance.
Just want to, uh, just to point out though that, so if you add up the 4.2 million dollars worth of water projects and then look at the table two where we have the anticipated funding sources that are already available, or that are already available to us, plus what we assume we might allocate of, uh, SPOSS funds that we received. Um, it comes up to, uh, those, those total funds come up to 2.89 million. Um, part of it is nearly 7, 900,000 of ARPA funds. And then anticipation of connection fees associated with Project Jane, which is an industrial development, uh, project. That sort of precipitates the need for the improvements on, um, William Street slash East Soul Street, 470,000. So that, that project kind of offsets itself, um, but the, the other projects don't. So, um, we would need to find 1.323 million dollars additional, um, to fund all of the water projects beyond a 1.5 allocation, 1.5 million dollar allocation from SPOSS. So like if we want, for example, Jim, we want to ask for an additional million dollars to help fund the, the, uh, Haygood Street, broader Haygood Avenue property line, or water line. That would leave us only, would need to find 323,000 dollars.
A different block, we're talking over period, we're talking over five years. So, so the, the total amount is not quite this harsh. They say, oh, we give 2 million dollars right now, but it is a five-year stretch. So it'd be like 41% extra back onto our thing, which is a, which is good.
Yeah.
So David, I have a question about, uh, going back to the cities thing. If, if, um, if there's any give, would the city mayors be all right with the 1% change? It just goes 1% with the way the struggle is going?
Um, you mean from the 76% that we proposed?
Because they're talking, they're talking, uh.
The county's saying 80%.
Yeah.
So I, I, I suspect the cities would be content with 78%. I don't think they would want to go any higher than that. Cause I think the contention is that the, most of the growth in revenue generating activity has been in the cities. Particularly City of Covington, seeing a lot of, um, growth in, in, in revenue generating, uh, activity. The county is not releasing much, um, relatively. And so there's no real basis to change the proportions, unless you're doing something.
News article that you referred to, they were very soft about saying that they can, and has to compromise.
Yeah.
But it was still negotiable.
Yeah, yeah. It didn't seem highly viable. It's this or nothing. I mean, they, they, uh, they said, we'll, we'll counter offer this. And I mean, you know, my preference is that we don't sit here and play like we're selling a car. But then we just get in a room and we negotiate this. Um, and I don't care if we do it in public, it can be in public, but, uh, or it could have been the chairman, cause sat around with the mayors and he's empowered to do so. But that hasn't happened. So we're meeting tomorrow morning. I'm sure we'll come out of that with something we will counter propose back to them. And we've, we generated that front turn, represent the cities, you know, as a consensus, here's what we propose. Yeah. That's kind of my thought is that we, we might kind of propose 78% and that's, that's probably that.
Do we need to think about advertising a special call voting meeting for next Monday for this purpose? So, cause the next day will be the county's vote.
Yeah, we probably do. We could go attack them beginning and, and, and once, cause hopefully by then we will know what the actual numbers are. And, and I will bring up in the meeting tomorrow, I'm doing what you, what you suggested, that we do have a project in particular that's disproportionate to our city because of certain, certain, um, employer, college and see if they might agree. We'll figure out what the percentage bump that would be.
A major Florida doesn't pay proper taxes.
It does not pay proper taxes, that's right, yeah. Now, I, I did, it did occur to me that, that we might go to them, uh, we need to have a conversation with them about payment in lieu of taxes. On that, I mean, at our university, um, that is something, payment in lieu of taxes is something that you, that you would do sometimes because they're clearly impacting on our infrastructure. Um, and so we might negotiate something with them as well.
How would the city of Hopkins where you house?
The city of, yeah. Yeah, yes. The college, our university now owns the, the Hopkins House that Nancy Murray was living in, yeah, yes. I don't know what their intention of use for it. I mean, the, the zoning designation allows a, a single family house. Or someone say something about an Airbnb, but, uh, I don't think our ordinance permits that.
I don't.
I'm gonna check that short-term rental, uh, aspect there, Dave. I picture. But.
So the special call meeting is 6:30?
Yeah, we'll do that 6:30. So I mean, the, you know, the, I guess the question for y'all though is kind of like, does the proportioning seem to make sense? When you think about what we, we just felt like of the, if we got 2 million dollars, you know, uh, or I'm sorry, if we got, I guess we were getting 2.2 million dollars from the, what they were initially proposing over six years. That, that 1.5 million to go towards, um, those water projects would be kind of a, a minimum needed. And we have about 1.5 million dollars in the water and sewer capital account. Which, we could go, we could fund those water projects with SPOSS and with those funds and ARPA funds and all that. Um, and then, uh, we were just talking about transferring some money that we have excess in the general fund account. You know, we move money over, we'll go ahead and move, move that 700,000 over into the water and sewer capital account. So when we deplete that, or as we draw out of that for these water projects, that we still have a significant amount in that account. So, I mean, then, yeah.
I wouldn't do it to let the people suffer.
Well, we, we've got to move the money because that general fund account is kind of too fat. And, uh, and so it was questioned where to send it so we can put it over into the capital. We're going to need to do, I mean, we're going to need.
I didn't say you didn't do it. I'm just saying the timing of doing it, like if, uh, if you waited too late in the week or something. If you don't break it up and a water project up, it's lost, I think. Somebody might ask you a question.
Oh, I understand.
So David, uh, circling back, but I, I don't think that the, uh, census is going to budge in. So with that number, it's just a matter of, if the mayors can get to 78 or 79, then that's what we need to set our sights.
There was the, in addition to the, where was that document you had, in addition to the, um, water projects, the other allocations we were proposing, you all were seeing. Grab it on the screen. Yeah, I'm sorry. It is that. Yes. So public safety proposal of public safety allocation for vehicles, cause we've got four aging vehicles. And, um, so we can use SPOSS for that. Infrastructure, uh, we've already talked about that 1.5 million. It's not just a good avenue, but it's, it's a bunch of one. And then, uh, other road improvements such as painting, we, y'all had received previously, we have in the capital budget, the 10-year, uh, repair schedule for our roads, um, which is probably about 500,000 dollars a year over 10 years. So, yeah, um, so we definitely, you know, putting about 500, four roads, little repairs in the SPOSS we've covered in just one year. We haven't paid that for time, but I don't know. Does anybody have any, I guess, if, um, I'm doing the math on what these actual percentage allocations. Does this look okay? As far, again, we'll try to get, we'll try to get more, more than 1.5 for the water and sewer, like we got 2.5 for water and sewer. But did the other numbers stay the same?
Yeah, that seems reasonable to me. I mean, I think that.
And we'll bring this, this will, we'll go on Monday, but just want to get a sense.
So this is voting on our anticipated percentage based on what was up there on the board just a while ago.
Yeah, what they did, yeah.
76, yeah, 88 was.
The total 2.2 million dollars Oxford chair is owed there.
Well, we anticipate more than that because that's based on the two.
Yeah, we do anticipate more than that, yes. But we don't know how much more.
Well, would it be feasible to increase our? Well, would it be feasible to increase our projection, what we're planning to do with it, based on did it more than less or something?
The water and infrastructure, we could definitely bump up, I mean, the public safety, unless there were other, I mean, we got, already have money allocated for the radio upgrades, some of the previous SPOSS, sort of, which is had car upgrades and that probably be, you're a big stuff, right? That would, that's not already in the capital.
That would be.
Hey, maybe, in the past, do we have to consider, tell the county what we plan to use the money for? And once we do that, we lock into that?
We have to tell them with some level of specificity, at least, you know, by terms of categories. Obviously, the more the public knows, the more they are.
Right, but you can't go out and say you're gonna do A, and then you end up going to B with that money.
Right, so like we said, in fact, I don't, actually, I think we.
Barry, your hair.
Right.
I would be saying more than like five hundred thousand dollars to public safety.
Right, then you have to weigh it.
Whatever, yeah, yeah. So these categories, these one through five categories here, we would put some allocation there, yes. So in this case, it'd be five, was it, sorry, two twenty for public safety, five hundred for infrastructure. Uh, I'm, no, sorry, it would actually be the one point five plus the five minimum, based on this, or two million dollars for infrastructure. And, yeah, two hundred and twenty thousand for.
If we were just to use the categorical.
We have to decide how to figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, obviously, in, you know, if we wanted to, in the press, suggest some of the things that, in these categories that we need to fund, so the public knows what, how things are talking about, but, yeah, we don't want to lock ourselves in because stuff may change.
Especially don't want to talk about the dollars there in the policy.
Yeah, specifically fifty thousand dollars.
Because we might need to take a little bit of all of their life to get the water line done, that's what we have to do.
Well, no, you can't do that, yeah, you can only, you can only shift around within, within the category. Like, within public safety, if, like, our pass dink, who bought, did not cost eight thousand dollars, and, or, yeah. But let's say it doesn't, then we could spend, we could take that money and spend it on another public safety need. But we would, we couldn't spend on nature.
Right.
Question. Just, you know, having dollars allocated either three and four, why do you have either three and four listed?
Just, just for informational purposes, if these are the categories, if y'all wanted to allocate to some of these other categories, we could. But based on the need that we have with the ten-year paving plan, the water line replacements, and our vehicles, that, that's, we were just bringing that forward, but if there were other projects you wanted to propose.
Quality of life, I'm not, that's, that's.
Pretty broad.
It's kind of big and broad. And it would, it would seem to me that, I agree, and I changed that to.
Well, we have to use those categories.
You gotta use that category.
Those are dictated by the county. Those categories are dictated, it's a question of how much you allocate. So what we've done is we've only added, as you said, to number one, number two.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that, you didn't, sorry.
My apologies.
I understand, you may know, or I'll be better, but if the county didn't have public safety in its category, then we can't add it, the way it was always, I've done it in the past. And so these are the categories the county has chosen, and so we're allowed to fit ours within those categories, but we can't change them.
Okay, well, he can take that a step further than that. To me, the restoration of Dry Indian Creek, Carter, is a quality of life issue, and it benefits the entire county. The benefits of that accrue to everyone in the county. So I think a strong argument could be made for that in particular. I don't dislike the argument for Hagan, but I think that's a strong argument.
We could put them both forward as we've got these two big projects that, you know, are multimillion dollar projects that have broader impact than just on residents of Oxford, with, as you said, the kind of decrease of county net transit.
It blows into Covington and, you know, few with. And on down the border there, so that's three municipalities out of five that it has a perspective on it, plus Russell County.
Yeah, and the headquarters are more or less, yeah. Yeah, we can, we can, we can mention what it was, it's additional factors to see if they would be conducive, let's think.
Why don't we do this, you've got like this, and then go back to the seventy percent or whatever, whatever that amount of money is, and put that in for Dry Indian Creek and, well, I do that. If you do that, I mean, that'd be a part of either one of those parts, every part of the life you do.
So like, if we, if we use seventy-eight percent, if we, if not them to agree to seventy-eight percent, we would get roughly two point four million, so we get another two hundred thousand dollars. So we can put that two hundred thousand dollars towards quality of life, quality of life.
Well, then go back to, you know, the one we already got.
Yeah, we could stick with, but, but.
Probably need to define, we need to find out what the county defines as quality of life, because the creek could be stormwater.
It could be infrastructure, right. In fact, in the infrastructure bill, and somebody, the infrastructure funds for ARCA that we could have gotten, could be used for watershed restoration and protection and land.
I think it's a strong, a strong argument for it, I guess.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, now, I'll tell you this, though, I mean, honestly, I'm about to say, all the cities have been great and, and, and very cooperative in spirit, and nobody has tried to jockey for more than the application along the cities. All the discussion has been about how much the county hits versus the cities. And that may be a part because we're all getting more, relatively speaking. So I just, I'm sure that to say, I don't want to necessarily stink up the, you know, muddy up the water, because if we get more, that means Covington or Borderdale or Fensfield or some sort of, yeah.
I was speaking though in terms of the eighty percent versus the seventy, eighty percent versus seventy-eight, not, not eleven percent, not percent. I know the government don't want to change that, I understand that, that will.
It just kind of creates.
Now, I was speaking of we should get twelve percent or thirteen percent. But if you use that as a leverage as to why we should get seventy-six rather than seventy-eight?
Well, the cities should get more, saying, oh, hey, here's two examples of county impacted projects.
Right, that's, I was, overall, I'm trying to be.
Yeah, I don't know that we will be able to successfully get more for Oxford relative to the city, but could be also.
Yeah, because not, you know, I was speaking in terms of the city, persistent, your percentage of whatever everybody is going to get, not individually, percentage of what the county is going to give over to the city.
I don't care how you do it.
Waterway, you know, that's for now.
I mean, you know, as you, as I drive the layout, this has been really, yeah, I, I don't understand why communications have been what they have and not been. So, I mean, because we've actually had conversations directly with them, we had conversations with the preceding county manager, and the current county manager, and I don't know about the counties, I don't know why they're approaching it this way, you know, why they didn't just have a work session of representatives. I mean, if, if it was only two or three of them, and then each of the mayors, for example, wouldn't be a public, it wouldn't be a meeting, we could have a, you know, relatively frank, um, public meeting, and, but they ought to not do it that way, so.
Well, I think you guys do a good job of what you got.
Absolutely.
I mean, a lot of it's just, you know, when it comes down to what we need, we need what we need. And we've gotten some good, Carter's worked with Bill closely to get us these numbers on our, you know, what our water project needs are, and we feel really good about, what's it, good about, in the, so we have a good sense of what that is. We don't like the number.
Yeah, these are random numbers just from last week. They're, they're illustrating our new costs.
Yeah, so this is pretty, yeah, pretty current cost, and then also on the roads, you know, you have a good sense of what it would take to bring our roads up to stuff, because really, all of our roads are, you know, as y'all know, could use some work. So with those two things alone, you know, we've obviously got some big needs, and, and we want to put our, those department, their vehicles that they need as well. All right, well, if y'all are generally meaningful, as soon as we have any new information, we'll send that out. What we can do is take the seventy-eight percent number, for example, and do an allocation back out to y'all as an illustration, but if, if the county goes with that, just in advance, we can mop that up and let y'all see what that would look like. Cool. Any other, one more, one more item? Yeah, that's where, I keep losing my agenda, I don't know. Anyway, okay, yeah. Uh, okay, yeah, the last item is, or, last, oh, yeah, is the task order for Atkins Engineering. Y'all may remember, we talked about having a task order with them for general engineering services or program management services to assist with a number of actions that are ongoing. We put in the budget for fifty thousand dollars for those services. And so we now have, for your consideration, the first task order under that master service contract that we agreed that we, was approved, to have Atkins Engineering, or it's actually Atkins Global, I guess is what they're actually called, to provide those general engineering or program management services in accordance with the scope that the wish provided to you all. It's paid out on, based on an hourly basis, based on our activating, they're asking them to spend the money, and, and we'll be in constant communication about the consumption of that, and, you know, it's, but it is a, it's on a per need basis on an hourly billing basis. So, can I get a motion to approve the task order for this general support contract, or task order? So, I got a second? Any further discussion?
I have, I have a question. What do we ask, how can we figure out, are we asking them to do so from base load discrepancy?
This is, we're saying we want them to be on standby to help us with a few things that are going on. And like, we, we've got to have some follow-up discussions where we need engineering support with G-DOT and.
We're not asking them to do the first task order, one that they can agree with.
Right, right.
But, so we're not giving them a task to do anything right now, because I'm with this, we're not asking them to do anything, but be aware that these are things that we're going to ask you to do.
Well, this is be on the ready, be prepared to do up to fifty thousand dollars worth of support work on, of general nature, and, and we have things that we do need them to help us with, like talking to you all about improvements to the intersection of William Street or East Soul and Eighty-One, about even the, you know, how do we complete streets, the whole stretch of Eighty-One.
I mean, I asked, what you were saying in the beginning, that was this going to be a situation where the council would know what's being asked before that?
Yeah, yeah, but then, again, this is like, this is more like, can you come to this meeting? So give me like two hours of your time, and I need, you know, I don't need the big guy guns, I need like a project engineer to come. So that, it's going to be those ones and twosy kinds of needs, and we'll give y'all an update, we'll give y'all an update with every month on where we are with that, because we're not, we don't want, we're not going to burn up the task order.
They'd be in the monthly invoices.
Yeah, they will be also in the invoices.
Some of the things in that list, some of the things in that list seem like the things that you said in the beginning.
Well, a lot of it is augmenting our bandwidth, you know, to, 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 like.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if we look at that entire list, there are some things in there, in my opinion, that would be something that I was wondering, why would we have to get in the framework of so many programs to do that?
Well, it wouldn't always be an engineer, that, in some cases, it might be someone who's more like a project manager who can do, I mean, in, in terms of, I can tell you, I know I probably pills well, each day, there's so many things that we don't have opportunity to get to. And so by expanding our bandwidth a little bit in terms of managing some of the, the follow-up with G-DOT, and making sure that, like, we're still trying to get approval on the, the permit approval for the sidewalk going from Soul Street North. You know, we need someone to kind of bird dog that and to stay on top of, of Kepa Wood, and make sure that, you know, that work is, is moving forward. It's, and I just throw that as one, just one of many examples of things. We do need to, some help in negotiating with the agency. We do have a task order, which we'll bring to you all on, but we're still talking about scope on. We're getting ready to the creek, that you all approved, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards Dry Indian Creek, but we're still working the scope on that one. But we'll bring that, that would be specific to doing all the design and engineering work and all the requisite elements that we suspect the Georgia Department of Transportation will manage against, which can be cumbersome. So that would be some of the things, but this is more like a, a number of individual items that we are working simultaneously.
No, man, I'm not trying to say the council needs a micro map.
Yeah, I just want you to get working on that.
I just like to know where, where it is going there, where it's going for some time, you know.
Yeah, well, and that's where I think it's going to be an open conversation with you all, is here's what we had to ask them to do this month, and what we can give you, you'll get, you'll see the invoices, you also get an update from, from them, and a bill or, and our, I, we'll give that update on a monthly basis. But it's, it's really just kind of to augment our capacity, because we've got a lot of projects going on, a lot of need to coordinate with others on these projects, including the state and other cities and counties.
I'm assuming that when you have, when they build a fifth down law, and we've paid a fifth down law, that we'll come back and ask for another fifth down law, is that about right?
Our hope is that that will, that we'll be going to, I mean, we're going to manage frugally, and we hope that that will last us a year.
That's not what I asked.
However, yes, absolutely. It's, if we get to, if we start getting close to using enough of that capacity, we will come back and.
So this, this is something, this is something that we'll try.
I mean, it's.
A debit, a debit card.
Yeah, a debit card.
I mean, I think it's like a budget, you allocate, you've allocated a certain amount of money.
So that's the same, if they have to allocate fifty thousand, that's all you throw, come back, you might not get anything.
Right, because we would have to amend the budget to approve, we won't budget fifty thousand. We won't budget fifty thousand.
We're not satisfied how you found that first fifty.
Then you won't give it to us, and you shouldn't, you shouldn't.
Okay, I mean, I think a good example is, the chief and I have been working on looking at Eighty-One. So I've been talking with a lady who's a representative of G-DOT down in Tennebunk. And it literally took me, and this is not an exaggeration, and this is several emails, phone calls, we met online with them. We just did get the safety data that they said has been compiled, and it's wrong. I mean, this took four or five months, and we know that it's not complete safety data. Daniel Parsons actually brought it up to me one day, we were standing out here getting them to plant those trees by the farm, and he said, you know, I've never understood why they have passing lanes on Eighty-One here through town. And it just hit me like a ton of bricks, like, that's a great question, with all these, you know, driveways and roads and all that, and crosswalks, and why, why do we have a passing lane in several different, Mark pointed out, and I had noticed, it's very difficult to see the flashing lights on the mid-block crossing at Emery. We can't trim the trees there because G-DOT won't let us, and we're not supposed to, it's on the right of way. But the signs aren't double on each side, they're only on one, so we don't think that it's properly signed. So this is all to say that we're identifying over several months issues with G-DOT and the road, and we're working towards getting a meeting with their staff, and to have someone representing us with Atkins. At that meeting would be helpful to help drive that, and then that person would go back to their office, and then at strategic moments, contact the right people at G-DOT to get these issues moving faster, because we've been taking several months. But beyond that, I think the idea is that person would be a kernel to get us working on another task order, which would be the actual plan for Eighty-One, we need to have a complete streets program for Eighty-One. So the idea is that someone in Atkins, every time we have a problem, Eighty-One would be thinking this is part of that complete program. So it gives us an engineer that's feeding these ideas into a long-term plan for that road. So the problem with using, and I'm not dumping on our, our, you know, Mr. Jordan, but his ideas don't go anywhere, because he's not, he's told me himself, I'm not going to give you a complete streets design of Eighty-One, I don't have the bandwidth to do that. So when we talk. So when we talk to him about issues with Eighty-One, it might solve that problem that day or that week, but it doesn't translate into action later. And so, I think that's the beauty of trying to do this with Atkins, is when we work with them on a little project, they can file it into the bigger project later, if that makes any sense. And that's, that's my vision for it. But you're absolutely right, and I don't see this as the ability for me and the mayor and anyone else to go around and just spend fifty thousand dollars. I have no intention of doing that. At this point, I'm not sure how we would. But when we do spend money, I think the idea is it would go into that to then fold into something else later. So it's money that almost is an investment later.
When I said what I said, I just meant that you didn't have to come back to the council for everything.
Right, got you, right.
And so, this, this is limited amount that you can use with your discretion within the context of what we're trying to do overall with Atkins and Company.
Right.
That, that's what I meant, but I already added it and made something out of it.
No, that's good. I appreciate, I appreciate an awful lot of questions, I'm anxious. Well, no, this is good, I mean, you guys, this is not just a big, uh, tribute, and we want y'all to be comfortable and, and, and fully encompass of what we're talking about doing.
Well, I've made some questions in my mind, that you and, uh, what, Bill? Uh, you used the term bandwidth in a number of times, and I didn't understand that. But, uh, I've always wondered whether problems were within the bandwidth within, of the city itself.
Oh, we've got that, yeah.
There are things well beyond the purview of engineers that we are getting done in a, in a time of doubt, in my opinion. Some of it dragged on for fifteen years and longer. And, uh, George and I, we'd like to say something, it's not before we leave this area.
We've had a long day with you.
We've been in six months.
I'm not getting up and dropping down, I'm not.
Yeah, no, no, I, generally, I mean, in, in my hope, for example, we do, we're successful in some of them.
We're going to vote on that, and then we talk.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, let's go ahead and vote on that. Any, any other discussion? All of them, say hi, all of those. No, I was just going to say that, that we, I do, I mean, we are looking at things like this, this property we were talking about with the water and sewer. I mean, if it's developed, it certainly doesn't develop industrial, but it is developed even for residential, that additional revenue helps us move forward, possibly with expanding the city's capacity to take on, since the infrastructure, the foundational infrastructure there and the, and the fees we would get, you know, would hopefully offset the impact. Then we would just be getting additional revenue. Similarly, like, if we do win Project Jane, electric service, utility service, then, I mean, that, that, I see that as transformational in the sense of our ability to do a lot more things in terms of like the outreach and the community festivities that our folks get stretched and doing. And, uh, so, yeah, no, I think that there's any number of things, generally, I concur, that hopefully we are on the way to broadening our, our development.
Going, going back to the property that they're, the order line extension kind of thing, that property's been talked about as industrial, but I know it since I've been on the council. And if you look at it, and look at the city limits, and look at what three ring circuits is, and what are the studios, and all those other studio type things, the industrial authority has their eye on that, that's pretty good. They will all in it, make a man over there.
I think, yeah, despite the fact that there are residential developments around the three-ring studio area and right on the other side of the creek, you know, City Hoxton beyond, that you're absolutely right. They're looking at that as, you know, they've, they've invested in one forty-two as a corridor for industrial development, and those are, some of the lash are in large parcels that could be sold for big projects. And so, yeah, absolutely, that's, that's what they're thinking, and so we've got to make sure that we, we assert ourselves in, uh, in the process, okay? Well, invoices, I don't know if y'all have any questions, if y'all have a chance to look at invoices, they're up here. Ask away if you have any questions. Sorry, we do need to go into executive session for a brief, uh, real estate discussion. This is first time. Water and trace is for, I don't have time, I have Mr. Perry. Just kidding.
Uh, as Potter is talking, it's just, it's just the wording is more than anything else, but they're not purchasing to a terms basis, they're purchasing to rights. Or internal. At what time do you work, mine spaces now, there?
No, you're right.
Mine rights.
Very rights to, uh...
Or very rights.
Yeah. The document itself says that, yeah. That's, I'm, let's say that. Any other questions? All right, well, can I get a motion to move into executive session?
Go ahead.
Second, please, second. Okay, any, all of them, say hi.
I can, hold that thought, let me turn off everything.
Okay.
I have redundancy with my recording.